You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 11th, 2022 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information on this meeting by visiting wwwcesslaporte county.org.
Alright, so welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting. Um, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its standing in the nation under our command, with its role to liberate and justice for all. So as far as opening remarks, I just want to add a couple of agendas to the end of the new business, and that would be the ABC and BCA positions that are available. We also need to discuss the solar ordinance from the Department of Plan and Commission, and I want to just talk a little bit about the electrician inspector for the building commission. Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve minutes of the June-
Do you have that, or may?
Yes.
Sorry, before we go further, you also have a publicized water regen production ordinance that could be on the agenda.
Okay, I'll put it down.
That was sent by Dan in the water department, advertising work on the project. So that is advertised for public hearing, see?
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, do I have a motion to approve minutes at the June 13 meeting?
To move-
Is there a second?
I'll stick it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
About the special council meeting at June 22nd, is there a motion?
To move-
Is there a second?
Second, gentlemen.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, police department report, and police commission report, please.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start with the recap from the July 4th holiday weekend, which consisted of four days from Friday through Monday. The department was very active, and we responded to a total of 73 calls for service. One incident report was taken, that was in reference to a car fire in the Stop 16 area of Indianapolis Avenue. The Long Beach Fire Department also responded, and the vehicle had to be towed. We had also, our marine unit was out for the four days. Two officers were out on our ATVs on the beaches, and each evening we had a minimum of two to three patrol officers patrolling the three communities that we serve. The only incident to report was a golf cart was impounded in the Doolin Beach community, where several underage teenagers had fled from us, and we assumed that there was an underage drinking situation, and the golf cart was therefore impounded. Aside from that, our reserve unit, a total of six deputies, provided us with 124 hours. Originally, earlier today, I sent you, it was 94 hours, I was incorrect, a couple of deputies had not logged in their time yet, so we had 124 hours worked by our volunteer staff, with a total savings of approximately $3,596 to the town. So we're very grateful to our volunteer staff. For the month of June, we responded to 252 calls for service compared to 223 calls for service in the previous year, for an increase of 29 calls for service. Nine incident reports were documented, with a total of seven individuals that were arrested. Three of the arrests were felony arrests, one was for a theft incident. It was a housekeeper that was caught stealing items from a home. One was a burglary warrant arrest out of Michigan, where the individual was found in the town of Michiana Shores, and was spotted by Deputy Yagelski on patrol. And then the last felony arrest was an OWI felony arrest, because the individual had a prior arrest for operating a vehicle while intoxicated. The other four additional arrests were all traffic misdemeanor arrests. Of those, three were additional OWI arrests. The month was steady, with no incidents of major concern to report. And also, I would like to comment, there was no police commission meeting, we'll have our next one in September. And then publicly, I would like to thank, over the weekend, we had a block party that was previously approved by the Town Council, back at our last Town Council meeting, it was held over the weekend. I did have two complaints through email, and one by phone, in particular, those references to loud music. One of the things I think maybe we can keep in mind in the future, is setting a curfew for the music itself. Originally, we figured it was midnight, 11:45, they had stopped the music. Aside from that, I spoke to the street superintendent this morning, there was no trash and debris, everything was cleaned up, so overall, the party went exceptionally well. Also, on Friday, I had approved the use of a hose going to the community center by the individual who had hosted the party, they wanted to use it for a portable bathroom that was there, and also indicated that they would make a donation to the town. I spoke to Britt Whitfield this morning, and I would like to publicly thank her at this time. She came in this afternoon and dropped off a check made out to the Long Beach Police Department, in the sum of $10,000 to go towards the purchase of an ATV slash four-seater beach unit for police and fire to use in the future. So it was an unsolicited donation, and again, Mrs. Whitfield should be thanked for her donation to the town of Long Beach, in the sum of $10,000. It was a very generous donation that she made today. So, that's all I have.
Chief, did anybody in practice let that golf cart, or do they have a new town vehicle?
Um, I believe, I believe so, it was from Grand Beach, Michigan, it was towed to Cloverleaf Garage, so I'd have to check the towing company, but yes, it was a Grand Beach, Michigan resident.
Okay. Police department, fire department, special commission, Tony?
Good evening. Just a quick report on our fire activity. Here to date, we have responded to 66 calls versus 83 a year ago. We've had 27 fire calls this year, based upon, previous year was 22, so we're running a little higher on fire calls. During the month of June, we had five, we responded to five fire calls. Our average turnout for fire personnel is eight, our average, our average response time for a fire call is 4.5 minutes. On the medical front, we've had 39 medical calls to date versus 61 a year ago. It's very interesting, because I think we had a lot of a bigger population a year ago here, and we were responding to quite a few medical calls in 2021. But during the month of June, we responded to 10 medical calls as well. Our average turnout on medical calls, five people, and our response time is 4.3 minutes. We had donated approximately 1,975 hours to the community from volunteer fire department, and we value that at about $81,000. Couple of just brief comments, I'd like to thank the community for their ongoing support of our ice cream social. This is the 17th year we've run the ice cream social here. It's become kind of a rite of, a ritual now for people, it seems to be, we see more and more people. Some quick facts, we served over 132 gallons of ice cream that evening, and with an ordered amount of toppings to go with the ice cream. We also popped 50 pounds of popcorn that evening, so thank you to the community for coming out, it continues to be a great event, and it also commemorated our 90-year anniversary as a fire department here. So if we did sell t-shirts this year commemorating that, we still have some available, if you're registered, please contact anyone in the fire department, we'd be happy to, to assist. Quickly, on the training front, if you were driving in town today, driving in from outside of Long Beach, you may have driven by Notre Dame Grade School today, and you might have seen the Notre, the Long Beach Fire trucks there, we're doing our annual truck rodeo. So there's a number of cones set up at the parking lot, in fact, I'll just went through the test, and, but very interesting, we've run through a number of different cones, and you might have seen that today, we're doing our annual truck track, truck driving tests. You'll also see our trucks out quite a bit this summer on, on different hydrants throughout the town, where we will be pumping water and, and, and doing training. Respect to the 4th of July weekend, fortunately for the fire department, we only had one call, which Mark referenced earlier, which is a vehicle fire, which we were able to extinguish for us, fortunately, there were no grass fires and fireworks, and everything went very smooth with fireworks in the town. We had two fire trucks out there on the golf course, positioned in different spots, and we did not have any incidents. John will provide an update on our truck and station projects, he's the building commission.
So in terms of the fire commission, we met, we've been working, making some progress on our fire station, the fire truck purchases, the site survey work that we need to put with the bid package, which we hope to have out sometime in the next few weeks, requires that we have a current site survey, we have an old one, we don't have a current one, so we're in the process of having that done right now. That was approved by the Town Council a while back, and that work is in progress as we speak. We also have to put out a request for pull, which we're working on with the town attorney, should have that out sometime in the next week or so, and then we'll be able to start having some more significant information for the Town Council in the way of pricing and what we hope to do for the station. So we're making good progress in that regard. Tom mentioned, we did get a new compressor for our SCBA in recently, so we're, once again, we're very tightly squeezed for space over there, we actually have to keep our Rescue 3 outside right now, because we had to accommodate that new piece of equipment for the, the new SCBA units that we have. So that's it.
Public Works, Maylin?
Hi, the Public Works committee met on June 27, and we talked about the rejection of the super project from the Michigan City Council. At that time, we talked about, Mark, did you hear the note from Greg today about the quote from Hons? He said it's late.
We have it when it comes up to the water ordinance, after the tap.
Okay, that, later on in the business, okay, then we'll discuss that. So it's the Public Works Department, the CCM, second application approval by the Town Council's due in July. The other thing is, we talked about early on, and we have to, if you have irrigation or water-based roof control, you have to have a backflow preventer, and it has to be certified. And so actually, we have two people on the council that haven't had their stuff, and I'm not going to say who it is.
I had mine done, and I put my certification in.
Okay, well, you weren't one of them.
Oh, good, sorry. I didn't know I was.
But I will tell you, we had a contractor, we said, "Don't worry, we'll send the stuff", and I did, but now I'm not going to send my receipt in, because I guess they have, they must have not followed up. But there are two people on the council that haven't sent in, so we're asking people to do that, we don't want to have to send out a smacking letter to them, so we do have to have that information in. And I think, I think Chris is on here, we do have an ordinance that says that they will be penalized, we know if they don't, if they don't comply, and we will fine them. So with regard to the Public Works, we did our annual green quality project, it's on the website, if you want to see that, and our next meeting will be July 25th at 9:00 AM.
I just got texted by somebody that's in the audience, and they said that the sound is atrocious, so we really have to eat the microphones tonight and speak loudly and clearly.
Okay.
Dr. Lomay, do you have another USB port, maybe you can try switching ports? I was reading here, and it's recommended maybe you try a different USB port, not the HDMI or USB.
So pull out the owl?
Yeah, and try and put in a different port.
Might be on the other side of the machine.
There's a small one right here.
Yeah, what, these aren't going to suffer, let's see if it's on. Let's see if it's on.
Okay. Okay, so this is on the right one. Try talking, see.
Maybe I said, change the video.
That's not enough.
Didn't make a difference.
Did you, did that start and stop video thing at the bottom, which you personally can get that thing to see?
No, it still doesn't do anything. Yeah, that did good. Okay. Park Board, Jan Kovich, or, or Kendra, I'm sorry. So let's, let's change the agendas, so that Kendra's always recited there, because I do this every month, so.
It may not always be me, though, it's usually Zach. It will be Zach, it depends on who's. So sorry about that. I'll let you guys know ahead of time. Summer camp's going very well, we've got about four weeks left of that. We've got Art in the Park coming up, which is July 30th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and we sent out flyers about that, and tried to publicize that. As always, thanks to the Beach Garden Club for their ongoing collaboration and support and helping us come up with great ideas around town. Some stop updates, stop 19, we cut back the milkweed at the request of several residents. It's going to continue to come back and restrict foot traffic to the beach, so we'll have to take care of that again in the fall, and keep up with that. Stop 21 and 23, the metal fencing quotes were received, and the low bidder was $10,000. So this is not Park Board responsibility, but we're, we're here to help manage this, to help, help manage it, and we got several quotes from the different contractors. So this is not covered in our standard budget this year, so if we're going to be asked to do this, the funding's going to have to come out of that carryover money, or approved tonight, or however, however that wants to be done, but we do have someone that's ready to go to get that done, which it's been over a year, we've had that orange fencing kind of up, so I think, for safety reasons and whatnot, needs to be done. So the fencing is part of the wall, as you all know, and therefore should have been part of pretty much the town can, the Town Council managed the stock repair to get that done, but it definitely was a beast of a project. We've got Woodruff donating a new waterfront for stop 21, so we'll get that in. Stop 29, the pre-frag work has started, as mentioned in previous meetings, and the plan is to have the stop back open by mid to late July, project is on budget, and we have received a detailed financial outline last week for the park board, and so we're going to be discussing our 2023 budget at the next park board meeting, end of the month. That's it.
Any questions?
Well, I think we are going forward to get either the park board or the town to get that fencing up, the bids were substantially less than we thought we were going to have to pay, and so I think we're talking $30,000, $35,000, we'll be able to do it for $10,000, so I'd say it's better.
Yeah, that's on the agenda. We can do it now if you want. So I spoke to Joy today, and I also spoke to Zach, and again, they both make the point that the fencing, railing, whatever we're calling it, was not part of what they originally signed up for, and should not be, sorry. Yeah, should not, should not be something that we expect every time, however they're willing to do it this time, so the park board is willing to pay the $10,000, that's my understanding, is that right?
No, I think, no, the opposite, that we don't have, we didn't plan for anything for 2021 or 23, since it was pretty much being managed by Woodruff and the whole promotion thing, so.
Right, I understand, so since we have this extra money that-
Oh, okay.
That is going to come out of that.
Okay, that carryover money, okay.
Yes, that was, so yeah, because I'm considering all that in my mind.
I got you, I got you, okay.
And so that was my understanding, that's your understanding, right? So I make a motion, well, I don't think we have to make a motion, you guys are doing it, but that's, so that's taken care of.
Yeah, go ahead, get it started soon.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, community center, John?
Yes, the community center didn't have a meeting, because of the 4th of July festivities, so there's no recording. Except that cooling tower, I think we're going to talk about that, aren't we?
You were in a piss? As we last time.
We passed that in a special meeting, I think that's-
Yeah, actually, there's, there's part of that, though, the hydro treatment.
Oh, the chemical treatment?
Yeah. So. Alright, so budget finance, Tim?
Good evening, we had a budget finance meeting this week, and during that time, we talked about the fund balances and the performance of each fund, if people want a budget finance committee. The town is in a healthy position, we also discussed the funds with the water department, which I don't think previously had been combined with the town in there, so we spoke about that as well, and there's some good, healthy balance with the water department as well. Recently, we received the influx of money from the state and the county, to the tune of about $900,000, that's, we had to be put in each, each fund, but we do receive the funds. We've had a few unplanned expenses, that I've already mentioned, cooling tower. We had to pay the GOBOD payment this past month for $96,000, but again, we were in a healthy position, we got state funds, county funds, blue chip funds came in for $5,000, and we're starting the 2023 budgeting process, actually tomorrow, we have a capful of budget meeting tomorrow, so that I'm going to pick that up, but otherwise, I think we're going to be changed, and if anyone has any questions, we'll let them know.
Okay, anyone resource, yes?
I think that's been done.
What is your case, guys?
I changed my name, here it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had Thursday, like, July setup, and a lot of this, I do post the minutes on, our medical comments posted the minutes for me, but I'll just go over briefly, a lot of this was in the last months, but Chief Swiss, they asked for Attorney Perry to pack his office, clear your costing analysis to our employees, so we know what the cost is for taxes, benefits, and if we gave a 3%, 4%, or 5%, we want to know the cost to the town. We discussed moving a police administrative assistant to $19,000 now, plus the 2023 quota. We now hired an administrative employee, this person is only, and our person in the police department only makes $18.09, so we want to gather her where she belongs. We've discussed moving a part-time police clerk to $15 per hour, their current rate is $13.50, and refer back to the two-year-old survey, we are late on their, on that, but this person works every Saturday, they don't get overtime benefits, and we think that is well deserved, to help us retain that person. The chief also wants to be competitive with recruiting part-time deputies in the range to be $28 to $30, $28 to $30 an hour. Currently, we're at 25, and he talked about, if I'm correct, Mark, the Beverly Showers, they got 14 openings?
Yes, so currently, they have 14 shifts, and they're unable to fill, their current rate, I believe, is $22 an hour, and they're also having a difficult time, the proposal that I was making for the $28 to $30 range would not increase our budget line for that particular ladder, we would just increase the pay and still work within the budget of $17,000 here that we have currently. So it would be no additional cost to the town, obviously, we would just be raising the, the rate.
And, and we're looking for some flexibility, so if we hire someone that has a lot of experience, he wants that flexibility in that range, so we're getting our proposal ready. Tim's office is working on the cost analysis for it. We also looked at the current salary for the court treasurer, and last year, Mark and I did a big survey of the town, so usually field that we're competitive with, Burton Harbor, Porter, Ogden Dunes, Chesterton, and we were, at that time, we were 50% lower than the rest of them, so in order to retract or retain anybody, or recruit somebody at the next election, we're looking in the range of $46,000 to $52,000 for that position. They think right now for $34,000, does that sound very clear? Okay. This is the same range that the chief and I recommended last year. The court treasurer position hasn't had any improvement over 10 years, and it's felt that we need to be competitive and attract future qualified officials. There was also a discussion with regard to earnings of the state, I reached out to a couple other court treasurers and asked them what they might be allowing us for a budget, and they heard from one court treasurer, thought it might be the state, between 4% and 4.5%. Mark also told us that the retirement pension went on 3%, so I asked him historically, over the last five years, and he felt it's gone up about 2.5%. We talked about the federal revenue forecast, and giving Celsius air period increases for all of us old people on the council, and it looks like it might be 11%. And then we also talked about, Court area has two part-time clerks, are they going to be full-time clerk status, we need to know that, or I don't need to know that, but the budget and finance, we need to know that for their benefits, because if a person works more than a certain number of hours, we need a budget for their perp and personal benefits. The next item of the discussion was longevity pay, we went back to the survey that was, that we did in 2021, we discussed the increasing longevity pay for employees who had more than 20 years of service. The chief can provide that information, so we don't have to have Court area, we think there are three to four people that have more than 20 years of service. And I apologize, we tried to listen to the new resource meeting, I guess we only take 17 seconds, and we don't know what happened, so we'll, we'll, maybe the owl that told us last Thursday. So we table performance of crimes from job descriptions until the August meeting, the next meeting will be Thursday, August 4th at 2:30.
Okay. And so where do you get the proposals on all that?
Yes, as soon as we get the cost, because I think that's important. Is that okay?
Yep. Okay, report, ready?
Oh, report, okay. Alright, the tree board that Wednesday, July 6th, we meet at 4 o'clock, and we have two new members, we have Charlie, and I think we have, we're still looking for a member of the tree board, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the old, the old business was the revision of the tree removal permit by Dave Levy and Janice Brown, and I will tell you that they did a thorough job, and we still have some work that we want to do on it, but it pretty much can help a new person in town, or a person that's been there for a number of years, on what procedure they need to follow in order to have a tree that's removed from town property. We received a quote for purchasing and planting a tulip tree in front of the community center we submitted, and we will, we are looking at a price of, of course, it goes up every year, we're looking at a price right now of $434 placement installation, so a ballpark number of about $1,000, because Janice said that usually you need to double the figure of what the cost of the tree is, and we're getting that out of Chesterton, there must be a Chesterton place over there that she gets her information from. And so I guess, at the end of this, I'll ask for approval for that. We talked about 29 and Two Lakes Shore Drive, but I don't think that, I don't think we should use the address, I think it's stop 29, about some trees there, great, or not great, Tom Dolph from the street department, and the chief have been involved in it, and we're, and we don't know whether we should have a certified arborist that make this decision in the tree board. The people that own that property, which I think are the Osmonds, they are, they are happy if we want it, they don't care if we turn it back, that property. The other thing was, was very interesting, well, we were looking at the, the tree board, and they're fairly new, they wanted to know what their role is, and should they, we know that a tree was removed at stop 24, and they wondered why they didn't know about it, so I'm fairly, you know, I've only been on the liaison for two months, so I gotta hold it tight, and the chief, and this probably happened last year, and it was on town property, the resident knew about it, but we just need to run it by, just some of it, the tree board's kept in the loop, and the tree board has been kept in the loop with stop 29, so I think that's a win for all of us. And they're working on the Long Beach tree board modifications, and I think, I think that's it. Our next meeting, which is always the first, it's the first Wednesday in, of the month, so we meet in August.
Next up is Bill, Christian, Matthew Battlin. 2216 Lashir Rivers and Beach Stairs, the owners are wondering how they can comply with the new stair ordinance, because the ordinance says that they need to get a letter of permission from the DNR and/or the Army Corps of Engineers, and so far, we're having a little success getting that information from the DNR Army Corps, so our town attorney is trying to get in contact with the DNR and find out what's up. If we can't get that information from the DNR, that ordinance may need to be changed, won't change as far as 42 and 200 stairs, but it may, we may not require Army Corps and DNR approval anymore, so that's what we're looking at. We're discussing the issue in general of seawalls, we had a concerned homeowner who got a letter from us saying that his seawaller, his stairs were in violation of our stair ordinance, he took his stairs down, and he's wondering why everybody else continues to have their wooden stairs, because they basically haven't complied with the ordinance, so we're going to look into that and try and get a list of all those wooden stairs. Some people are under the mistaken impression that the wooden stairs have been grandfathered in, that's not the case, they installed a couple years ago, took them all out, none of the stairs are in compliance, and in fact, we got a lot of repairable stairs that need to come out, and so in the next few weeks, I'm going to be taking a walk with the building, inspector, get a list of those technical stock enforcement actions. 25, 22, trail, 750 square feet to a patio, they're increasing lot coverage, and to retain walls on the side, set that, therefore, that was denied, it's a bad form of law. We have issues with the electrical inspector, we've been using the electrical inspector from LaPorte County, thought that was going to be the answer to our problems, but LaPorte County apparently doesn't do a final inspection. Ford County apparently doesn't do a final inspection, and that's what the roles need to fit in. So we're trying to find out about whether or not we can find people who are registered under credentials to do those inspections, and see if we can find another alternative to using the Ford County. Also, twenty-two Oriole Chassleton, there they got a variance from the BZA to build a shed in the letter from the BZA, they were specifically told they need to wait till they got a permit from the building commission, they went ahead and built the shed about that, therefore, they received an citation, and the building inspector's gonna check and make sure that that shed complies, which what the BZA had suggested that they could do. And finally, twenty-twenty-one Silver Tip, same deal, these folks got a variance to build a garage, basically, a lot that was too small, increasing lot coverage, wanting to see a permit, now, however, that garage is going to be too tall, there's some confusion as to whether the garage was in fact attached or not, the decision by the building commission was that in fact it was an unattached garage, and therefore is restricted by our high ordinance, so, and that was the issue there. Next up is the Board of Attorney Appeals, stay that up for June fourteenth. Twenty-two's eleven Oklahoma Drive was discussed, that was a situation where they wanted to increase the volume of the existing pool shed and deformable lot, and the construction shed in the front and sides, in the site, and that's what that, and basically, they asked to have that contained, and that is granted. Twenty-sixteen Oriole Trail, the petition wanted to uninstall a stone patio, purple replacing the existing walkway and managed installing a patio, that is going to result in an increased lot coverage on a lot that was too small, that was set for public hearing. And then, that lots fifty-one through fifty-seven three, it ensures, petition wanted to build a home that was gonna go be thirty-three feet tall, that was moved for public hearing. And then, the one in twenty-twenty-one Silver Tip with the garage, that was granted, but again, later on, it was discovered that that garage was too small, first piece too tall, and therefore, they, the BZA approved it, but then the building commission denied it, so they're gonna have to go back probably to the BZA. And then, twenty-three eleven Hazelton Drive, petition was asking to replace an existing deck with a porch resulting in increased volume, and that was approved. And last thing, the customer's petition, twenty-two oh eight, where the shed is in rear setback, and yeah, I think I discussed that earlier. Any questions on that? Otherwise, A, B, C, make that on six, twenty, twenty-two, the non-performing ordinance is set for public hearing, and that will be discussed at the next A, B, C meeting. Also, the Steve Slope slash Dr. George ordinance is set for public hearing, again, that'll be discussed F and S meeting. And then, a public hearing is held at that meeting for the Silver Ordinance, that's gonna be discussed later tonight. The petition by the A, B, C was to send that to the town council with favorable recommendation, and yeah, we'll be discussing that later. Okay, Building Permit Governor, your part, Tim?
Yeah. Building Permit, wrote a report for June twenty-two, there were fifteen permits issued for two hundred and forty-three thousand ninety-five dollars, a hundred and one percent, two thousand hundred and sixty-four dollars. Eight electric permits issued from only one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, no street cuts. June legal expenses totaled fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, of that fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five was paid to Reggie Nelson James, James and Terrence, and one hundred and twenty-six dollars was paid in nine and a half, really good at night, so I don't intend a motion.
I think that motion, is that set?
I think that's...
Any discussion? On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished, Lake Shore Drive, Surfer Project, I don't think anybody talked about that, who can take that off the agenda, Tim?
Wait a minute, go ahead, no, no, you go first. There's been zero publicity about this, zero approach and microphones, people.
Yeah, you know what?
This is not...
This is not public comments, there will be public comments at the end, okay? Okay, so...
I did, I did get a call from the Lake, uh, Ford County Health Department, and she gave me a phone update, but I asked to have that information sent to me via email, so I was, you know, a hundred percent correct in what I was committing to the town, so I will prepare a report with the town council's approval, and we will distribute that, I would say, in the next couple of days.
And Tim, can you kind of tell the public what she said earlier?
Yeah, but don't hold me to it, if I mess it...
I'll get, Tim, I'll hold you to it.
Yeah, I know, I know you will. The, uh, the Ford County administrator called me and said that now that Surfer Project was dead, quote-unquote, that residents on Lake Shore Drive were able to apply for permits to repair septic systems, and again, her words, once the moratorium is lifted, in the next couple of weeks, that's what she said, then Lake Shore Drive residents will be able to apply for new septic permits for reconstruction and homes that need to put new septic systems, all on a case-by-case basis. Again, I'll get details and I'll distribute that, but that, that's the basis of our public comment system.
Okay. Okay, next up, the second meeting of the term limits ordinance, I think we've all seen a copy of that, I think I passed on first reading, last meeting, so at this point, Chris, are you out there, we, I think we need a motion to approve that?
There were changes that were made to the first reading in July, I think it was first...
Okay.
This is ordinance number twenty-two-two establishing term limits for commissions, boards, and committees. The original name indicated there'd be two consecutive three-year terms. After the discussion at the first reading, we changed that to four-year consecutive terms. And further, that's under section thirty-four point four-one, paragraph A, under the same section, paragraph D, we further clarified that under number two, or under number two, that should the term be expiring, and we do not have an individual to replace individuals coming off that committer version of ordinance, and that individual would be invited to stay on until such time as we find a replacement for them. Those are the two changes.
Okay, and I'm still opposed to this ordinance, and I have a question. The ordinance establishes term limits for appointments to town commission, boards, and committees, how about the town council? Is that purposefully left off, or was that narrow or weird?
I'm not sure if she had a...
Does the town council gonna have term limits?
No.
So that it's purposeful?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so is there a motion?
So...
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All right, let's do this, a vote, a vote, a review?
Yes.
On a no, on a one?
Opposed.
Mike?
Yes.
John Doe?
Yes.
Okay, so passes three, two. Chris, is there anything else you need to do with that?
You do not. Sign it.
Sign it, that's good enough, okay. Okay. First reading of the ordinance twenty-two-two dash eight establishing board of public boards and safety. I have a couple of issues with that. One was on thirty-three point four-seven composition of the board, so a town council member would be counted as a liaison. I guess I'm wondering, why do we want just one town council member? I'm thinking now, forces as the makeup of that board, we have one town council member who's intimately familiar with the water department, we have one town council member who's intimately familiar with the street department, I guess to me, it makes sense to have, I would like to have both of those people on there, and maybe those people both being liaisons for water and street, to me, that makes a little more sense in terms of taking advantage of people's expertise. Does anybody have a rejection to that?
Um, we have a town administrator who's really, I mean, he could handle my side and probably the other side, so I think he just, most committees have one town council person as a liaison.
Well, I, I guess I'm...
I mean, before, we didn't have a town administrator, but Mark's really involved in both sides, and I feel very comfortable, but he's knowledgeable of anything that's going on.
So then, if Mark's comfortable with both of those, would be very happy, he'd be the liaison?
Well, Dr. Lemay, this is Chris, after Chief Swisstek and I and Greg and Tom, I think the goal is, that language gives the flexibility to either...
Mark, are you familiar, Mark, are you familiar with the continued thought process?
Sorry, can you hear me or not?
Got you now.
Okay.
So we lost you, Chris, but you addressed me, I think, and then you pulled out.
Originally, when Chris and I spoke, I think one of the things we wanted to give from the council was direction as to three to five members, currently, we have the public works committee as is set up today, there are a large number, I think there were eleven or fourteen members on it, so we're gonna have to make some decisions as to the number, obviously, needs to be an odd number, and then there was a discussion on having myself chair of the board or a member of the council chair of the board, which I am, you know, good with the way at the council. I think administrator chair of the board.
And if function as a liaison, you're in his house.
Yes.
And this is Chris, getting back to, sorry, I cut out there, part of the thought processes too was with the organizational chart that the town council approved at the last meeting, because those departments, street and water, report directionally to the administrator anyway, the thought processes, that would be a good way to streamline everything.
All right, so the thought is then that the town administrator would be the liaison. Another question I had too, I know this is more on the water side, is a lot of times there's small changes that need to be made, people need to be reimbursed, people, I guess I'm wondering, there should be some language in there, authorizing this more to authorize those small refunds that people get, just because I hate to see each one of those have to come back to the town council, these meetings are wrong.
I would agree, we set a dollar amount, then anything to see the dollar amount kind of for the council for final approval. So I think the other thing we need to decide on is the number of members, and then a little few presidential appointments from the council.
As well as the term, the term is left open there in the, in the ordinance, so my suggestion is if you were inclined, you could pass it on first reading and then propose some changes that are circulated prior to another meeting on second reading.
I would make a motion to that effect, there's a second.
That's a good...
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would suggest, I need five members for membership, and then whichever way they go, if they're gonna be presidential or if the council, and as all those, I'm gonna need to decide that level of detail later, but I would, I would make part of Mike's motion that we would make it a five-member board.
Also, if I can just get clarification on my role with the board, would it be a voting member or just the liaison, I need you to clarify that as well, so...
I think it should be a voting member.
Agreed.
Yeah, if you were not voting member, we thought about, I have sixty people on there that have an odd number of votes, right? So I think we'd like the board to be...
So four appointees, and you would make it a five-member board?
Yes.
So a motion, second, passes on first reading, on all favor, say aye?
Aye.
And aye.
Aye, and then come back again next month with the town's side reading. Okay, new business.
Dr. Lemay, I have one thing, attorney will be, Chris, probably you can join in here shortly, but we need to, under new business, Dr. Lemay, we need to open up a public hearing for the water rate ordinance, and we have to see how this order goes tonight, because that was a whole sucks.
Right, yeah, I got that, but I actually, because we gave it time to do it, because we just passed it over. So we have the water rate ordinance that we've all seen, and that needs to be passed on first reading, is that right?
No, well, I mean, and maybe Mr. Perry can help out here, while, my understanding is that Trista Hudson and Senator Associates have been working with the clerk's office and Lynn from the water department, because the, sorry, the repeal of the one-point-four percent utility tax, which was effective as of the life first, so the ordinance is bringing the town's rate structure in line with the requirements, and so Senator Associates prepared to vote ordinance and reconfigure what the rates are to bring everything in line with the state, so now not only do you need to open a public hearing, you need to vote, after that public hearing, if you want to consider passing all the one meeting, you need to have your unanimous vote to do to suspend your rules and pass it on second reading in the same meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot. So basically, what happens, like, is people weren't being overcharged for the water, and the state changed the way that water delivery is taxed, and therefore, required these changes, so...
Yeah, in fact, it's a positive for everybody, it's not actually earning more money there, it's just bringing everything in line with what the percentage is, if I've got anything incorrect, Tim, feel free to check it, but I believe that's the gist of the message from Senator Associates.
That's, that's the gist, we thought that it would be an easy one to pass, and send me three minutes of reduction and ready, I don't know, so...
And so the public hearing was publicized timely, and so it will be the appropriate type of open public hearings, is there any comments or, and the proposal...
All right, so any other comments from up here in this panel?
No.
All right, anybody in the audience or on Zoom want to speak against this order? Does anybody on Zoom or in the audience want to speak in favor of the ordinance? I would make a motion to pass this ordinance on first reading, is there a second?
I second it.
On favor, say aye?
Well, let's, let's make sure we close the public hearing.
Okay, I close the public hearing, now I make a motion to pass this on first reading.
I second it.
Favor, say aye?
Aye.
That was unanimous, I'll make a motion to pass this on second reading.
I second it.
Any discussion? On favor, say aye?
Aye.
I think that was a unanimous, all right, it is passed.
So we need to make sure we assign happy to Senator Associates, and that we can take care of everything we need to from there, that I think.
All right. Okay, I'll do the big business, Haven Five Kevan donation to the community center?
Yeah, the Haven Five Kevan was a great success, lots of people participated in the town fight with water and the youth gym, Fourth of July, and Kevin Haven came over this week and made a generous contribution of one thousand dollars toward the town. He asked what it would be used for, I said, we have a cooling tower going in, and he said, that didn't sound exciting enough. And then I said, maybe we're striking pickleball courts outside of the old school, I don't know, and he said, well, I'll contribute to that, so he made a thousand dollars and sent an email saying he would like his thousand dollars to go to the striking pickleball courts, if in fact we do it. Since then, Merk Whitfield, that remember the fact, we might be striking pickle courts, and she brought in a fifteen-hundred-dollar check in addition to the contribution she made to Chief Swisstek today, so we have, we have an estimate of twenty-five-hundred dollars to strike pickle courts, and there will be no expense to the town based on the two contributions we have.
But these would be striking pickle courts if the town doesn't own, is that correct?
Yes. That would be a park order, it's an issue, I mean, that would be something that park board would...
No, 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 what, what is going to be, strike is not town property, is that correct?
It's country club.
Yeah, so some of the country club, they're gonna let us do it, so...
Yeah, I'm ready. This is Chris. This is Chris.
Inside.
Sorry to chime in here, but in order for that to happen, I do think that you probably need some agreement between the town and the, and the club just so that everybody's rights, you know, obligation, responsibilities, expectations, and that gets certainly just be in their own agreement. But certainly some of the town would do if you were involved, so.
Tim, what did Park Board say about?
Well, so in full disclosure, Zach emailed me and said, Park Board has considered this before and based on the potential noise there against it. He corrected my number wrong, I think, or that's what I thought Zach said. And then being that the country club owns the land and that was informed of this and that says that it will be discussed at their next board meeting, which I believe is July 21st. So the country club's talking about it, Park Board already weighed in with their opinion and we have to unpack our box to go towards pickleball courts if we end up doing it or, you know, or not.
I'd say we put it towards the interior. She's working on finding a great interior pickleball.
Well, my understanding is the person who donated wants it to go towards pickleball courts, right? So we don't really have that option. Now, are we talking about new pickleball courts or are we talking about striking the existing?
So I would like to maybe wait for a minute on some of the emails that go back and forth. So we're talking about the asphalt area that is just east of the asphalt courts, adjacent to the asphalt courts. And it's also funny enough to the community center windows where flyies and yowges help in there. So there is a concern of the noise from the pickleball to our tenants that we have in that building as well. I will say that I fully support our park board and our park board has done some excellent things in the community. And I would ask that before the council makes any decisions for that, that we allow the park board to take a look at this opportunity, to weigh in on it, give the council some direction moving forward. I just don't want to circumvent what our park board is doing and overstep them by going to the country club. I don't feel it's right to the park board members who work hard each year to get it for us in the community and that. So great that we have the donations and they went directly to a certain cause and we always put donations to other things as well. But I would definitely recommend that we get park board input moving forward and also the community center board input, ask our tenants over there. So two valuable boards that I feel that we need to look at.
And I may, the country club may kill the whole thing anyway, so it's not done either by the stretch. And if that does happen, I'm sure Brooke Whitfield and Kevin Haven will allow us to write funds to it something else. So I don't even put the park board out there and kind of, you know, that's why I'm a little bit pressured. It's absolutely fine, we should, whatever they decide, if the club decides, it'll, you know, it. I'm sure the generous donation will be able to be centralized.
Okay, so we're going to put that on hold for now and it's a work in progress. Okay, next up, resolution 2022, that is 004, town organizational chart. Basically, we just need to approve this chart, correct?
Yes, Dr. Lemay, that being the organizational chart and then also the ordinance will clarify the provisions, date for that to June 15th, 2022, the handbook update as well. So it covers both of those topics.
I'd make a motion to approve this organizational chart.
I second it.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, beach staff's written expenditure, $10,000, we talked about this a little bit earlier. We already asked it, okay. Yeah, that's a great, cooling, community center cooling tower, we already approved the cooling tower. Now there's a hydro water treatment contract that we need to approve. I have a copy of that in front of me, but.
I can summarize for you, the contract before associated with hydro management is a water treatment, water management system. This would be the individuals that would come in, provide digital reports and writing detailing the operations and conditions of our new cooling tower. They will also add the additive to the water that is required to stop bacteria and other mold such from growing within our new cooling tower. This hydro management contract is for $350 a month for an annual cost of $4,200. I will say the previous treatment company was only putting in about 13% in chemicals. This one will add over 33% in chemicals, therefore hopefully reduce the corrosion that occurred in the previous tower. And then in addition to that, we will need a expenditure for just shy of $4,000 covering the chemical feeder pumps and all of the water controls, electronic timers and everything that is necessary to include the water meter that would be utilized for the monthly treatment. Both of these expenditures come in well below the previous approval by this council for the overall air conditioning replacement at the community center. So my recommendation would be to move forward with the hydro management contract for a period of one year.
I make that motion, there a second?
There's a second.
Any discussion, Sean?
Mark, was there a deal or going out for three years of this one? Or is that just not a deal or a save?
No, there's an option for us to go off for three years. My recommendation would be since there are new vendor to us, there's no savings if we went out for three years. Then we try them for the first 12 months and if we're satisfied, then we can enter into a two, three year contract next year this time.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, water requirement request, we did a little short drive, water tank upgrades, I think we got that as an impossible day. John, have you seen that?
We did, we did. Great, great sentiment.
Do you have the numbers?
Yeah, it's a $45,000 cap. His estimate is between 38, I think, and 45. So it's essentially a cap of $45,000 for his engineering costs to put the bid page together and manage the bid process to get some numbers. I think the anticipated start of that process would be like a fall bid date because it will take them some time to get the documents dressed back up and considered correctly as he, as he works through the process. I want to point out a couple of quick things. That number that we're knocking around, that alternate that was part of the sewer project, did not include some things in many of your plans speaking of this market. Did not include things like general conditions and some of the renovation work that was part of the sewer project as bid items in the sewer project. So we have to be careful to make the assumption that that water project will come in at that number. Now, we have done some of the work already so that there will be some savings in terms of some of the work that I said, but there will be some other additions. So I think we have to be prepared for maybe an at or above number for the project itself in addition to the $4,000 or $5,000 worth of engineering. I'd like to point out one other thing as we move along here with Greg and yourself. You know, there's been some discussion about additional water services, a long way short ride for the town's benefit in terms of irrigation possibly at some of the stops that need that and whether or not we want to do water fountains at other locations like 21 will have, which used to be kind of a quasi private public sort of installation, but is now part of our town obligation at 21. So we need to probably have a workshop session with Greg and see what we want to do in terms of soulful project when we initiate this engineering work with us.
Two, the last point, I had spoke with Greg, the reference to the water taps recommended at the beach stocks. The only one he has recommended is stop 24, that is because of the potential growth at 24 and the size of 24. So he's recommending that we put in one in 24, that would be included in the bid specs that would be going out. Aside from that, one is in 21 currently and he does not recommend any of the stocks at this time to have water tanks installed.
But did that include the discussions with town about some irrigation areas where there's growth and stuff that the park department is installing? We aim to have access to some irrigation?
Yes, it was included in that discussion and they feel comfortable using the new hose ramps and the firehose and the hydrants. Once this newly planted new grass takes hold, there will not be the need annually like there is this year to take care of those areas. So therefore, they're just recommending stop 24 be the only town had water tap. And then in addition, John, that is true, there will be some probably cost overruns that we need to look at closely with restoration, how we're going to handle that with some of the homes that have their landscaping over the town right away and when we go in disturbing that, however, we want to address those concerns on some of those properties in that.
Thank you.
So we need a motion on that to approve that? And I guess one question I have, is that typically how we see this with us and other engineering firms, you get a range and then we rely on them to try and keep costs down? Is that now typically works?
You can write a contract however way you want to write it. I think he's giving us some flexibility. We can choose to do a natural seed contractor then or we can try and tie into a tighter number, I suppose.
Does any, does any of his engineering work, a duplication of what you have to do for the sewer project? I mean, how do we separate that?
Well, what I just described is part of the problem. We don't have a tight scope quite yet for you because we have some of these other things that we're discussing. And they have to go back in the stack. So your assumptions are correct, and there's a lot of work that has already been done. But when you take that project out of the sewer project, things like general conditions, you know, all the insurance costs, everything that's involved in a contract of that magnitude. I mean, we're talking about eight to a million thousand, eight hundred thousand, a million dollar pandemic potential. So there's a lot of front end costs that were burdened on to the, or the sewer project took the burden of by virtually being a much larger project. Now you've got a standalone project, all that's got to be sorted out. So the bid, the bid items in the original sewer project, some of those included water work, some of them did not. All that's had a standalone now on this project. So there is a lot of work involved in just making that construct, the new construct. It's not as simple as saying, take page three on the sewer project and make that the bid. It doesn't work that way.
Dr. Lemay, so I spoke with Greg about the, the, and shared with him the amount of funds that the water department currently has. Water has more than enough to pay for this. There won't be any financing required. Doesn't mean we should block them for grants, but the water department has funds to pay for that, that town and any, you for that and that.
One thing, I'm sorry, the one last comment I'll make is that it's not extremely tight sense that this is not something that's got to happen right now. I mean, the idea is to keep the ball moving, keep the momentum and I would suggest that we want to keep the ball rolling. This is essentially about services that need to be replaced, but they're not in emergency status as we saw.
So we ready to make a motion on this?
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
I'd make, I'd make a motion, we just said it's a natural seed $45,000 contract, with the understanding that the range was 38 to 45, the motion could version of the language of that, do you mind a motion?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
I think that was unanimous again. Okay, additional email accounts to the boards and commissions. So about three, four months ago, town council, Paul got email accounts, then we made a way, request premium information requests. We have just one email account to look for them and people are using private emails for town business. That's been a little difficult for us, but we've got it through. Now the question is, we want to have other boards and commissions do the same thing and I think you were going to meet with Chris, is that right?
That's correct. And we spoke again this morning, when looking at this to cover the town on any freedom of information requests, it would be recommended that boards and commissions, that being the volunteer residents that help us in the daily business of the town, that we recommend that they have a town designated email. That would be something as simple as if the individual's name is John Doe, it would be your first initial J, last name Doe, at longbeechhighend.org, similar setup as we have with town's employees. Therefore, I looked at the boards and commissions, I come up with approximately 45 additional email licenses that we would need. The basic email license is $6 per month to include $2 a month for the Defender 360I, which is a dual, dual, dual fact, I'm sorry, dual factor. I thought it came, I can take it down.
Multi-factor application.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for. So therefore, $8 a month, 45 licenses, you're looking at $360 a month for an annual cost of $4,320 a year in addition to what we already paid for our computer licensing agreements. So if we were to move forward with this, I spoke to K Plus, our IT vendor this afternoon. And speaking with the logic, he recommends that we move forward with it as well. He also recommends that we take on the additional $2 to the basic $6, which is a total of $8 a month to make sure that the licensing is covered so that we can not have any intrusion from the outside in keeping us safe. Also, Chris and I could a little bit discuss the, as far as retention period. The retention is over 50 gigs per account, which would take us about 10, 15 years to store it, so there's no concerns there as far as recovering anything. And then as a member adds, we have some decisions to make on APC, VCA, under appointments and that. As a member comes off, we deactivate that email account and reactivate new members' account. So we have to make those changes, you know, month to month, as they occur. So that is your cost analysis. You're looking at $360 a month roughly, if we want 45 licenses for an annual increase to our computer licensing of $4,320 a month.
And so as members come off, boards and commissions, councils, is the town that is responsible for maintaining those old communications?
They would be in the retention, they would be stored, so we would have access to them as an administrator, either by himself or the IT department. K Plus will be on game too, also. Chris, anything you want to add?
That, Dr. Lemay, and the council in general, this step isn't required, but you know, I believe. And it had been, it continues to be that everybody should have an email address that is tied to the town's server. So that if it went there after a request, public records requests, they're in a central location. And while private email accounts are still used, they all are subject to, they, there are communications, not everything in somebody's account that they use Comcast or Gmail that is subject to being inspected, but there are communications that are considered or can be considered public documents. So it's one of those, this is one of the strongest suggestions that I make for the betterment of the town and for operations. And I also think it'll make the clerk's office and the town administrator jobs easier for information purposes in terms of in your class, but also protection requirements that the town is subject to under the analog. So I support what Mark has shared and my strong recommendation is that you do this and that everybody be required to use these accounts.
Any discussion?
I think we had to do a training session for some of these folks because it's a bit of a complex effort to change over. So if we're going to do that, I agree that we should do it. I just think we need to do a training, set up some sort of training for workers and anything.
Yeah, I agree. And also setting up the communication of what the expectations are using, using these accounts as well. So I agree with that completely.
All right, I make a motion to pull the trigger. You have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, street department request of the capital expenditure and market replacement for street superintendent.
In the 2022 capital expenditure plan, the street department had allotted $110,000 to a replacement of vehicles. Our street superintendent is struggling currently to 2014, has seen some maintenance issues and showing substantial amounts of rust on it. That vehicle would remain in the fleet as a secondary vehicle, but they are wanting to purchase, and I have photos for anybody that would like to see this evening, of what the 2022, that 250 Super D V work truck will be. It actually has a workstation on the back with lockable compartments, also has a bed on the back of the truck. We came across this truck when the current truck was in for service in a little over two weeks. We came across this truck when the current truck was in for service a little over two weeks ago. We have tried to have secondary quotes on this truck. We reached out to a Ford dealer here locally in Fort County, in as far away as the commercial fleet, um, Ford dealer in Bloomington, Indiana. Both have reached out to us and said they cannot quote that vehicle, therefore they cannot get the twenty twenty-two model. We asked for a price on the twenty twenty-three model, and then they said they could not be quote the twenty twenty-three because the vehicles are not available, there's not pricing from Ford, and they have no idea when the vehicles will be available. The truck that we came across was ordered well over twelve months ago by the Bozak Ford dealership in Burns Harbor. The three that they have in, two out of the three have sold. They are holding the third one pending tonight's meeting. I have to call them tomorrow. The price on this particular truck was originally fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. They have reduced the price since I last talked to them to fifty-six thousand, two zero two. In addition to that, we would need the lighting, the plot package, and installation of all that equipment for roughly sixteen thousand dollars, bringing the total purchase price to approximately seventy-two thousand, two hundred. And that would be coming out of the capital expenditure fund. And also, speaking to superintendent Dolph, he recommends that possibly, um, partial payment of that truck come from the store market fund and then remainder from Riverbowl Capital Fund. Or we have financing options available as well. Um, we reached out to two vendors. We've been given two different financing options, four point three two for four years, or four point four two for five years. And then from Ford Water Company, we've been given financing at seven point two four. Um, in addition to that, five hundred and forty-five dollars in bank fees. So we would ask that the council approve the truck purchase from Bozak Ford here locally in Burns Harbor. It would bring substantial savings to the town because if we were to wait for twenty twenty-three pricing and availability to come out, the truck would in effect be available for at least twelve to twenty-four months, possibly even longer than that. I would add that, um, Fort County Council, I heard other council members today, speaking of eight plow trucks that they were purchasing, uh, ARP funding, that they were so excited to purchase the trucks using ARP funds. But unfortunately have learned that availability on the trucks is at least eighteen to twenty-four months out. And we're seeing that with police cars, ambulance, and fire trucks as well. So therefore, the recommendation since this truck is available and gives substantial savings to the town, that we move forward purchases and then decide on financing or hard purchases.
I would make a motion to buy the truck. Is there a second?
My second.
Part of financing, um, or purchasing straight, or, or purchasing straight. Do we have the money to purchase it straight?
Yes, we do have the money to purchase it straight.
Make a motion to buy the truck for cash. Is there a second?
My second.
Discussion. All things say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
How do you manage?
Just, uh, do we have any preference? Would we want to take partial on the store market and then the rest of Riverbowl Capital? Just thought we'd discuss that tomorrow, maybe at our capital meeting. Very good.
Okay, um, add an item, we can cover the following, and set to, uh, first off, solar, um, solar, sent back to us from the APC. Um, basically, this is another case of unintended consequences. Um, the solar board has said that, uh, you have to get permission from NIP. We had that agreement from NIP, so he went to the solar panel on the roof or in your yard. Um, what we came to find out is NIP still didn't care as long as you weren't hooking up to the grid. So this basically, this change basically says that if you're not hooking up to the grid, you're just using your solar generator for your own house, you don't need permission from NIP. So that's basically what this is all about. So I would, uh, make a motion, Chris, this has to be first and second reading, right? Chris, are you out there?
I'll probably amend it, amend it.
We're amended, yeah, so I think the amendment that we passed on first and second reading.
Somebody, you just amended, but check.
You know what, he's not answering, so let's just do it anyway. So we do it twice, you know?
Can you hear?
We hear you. Talk quick.
Yeah, so, no, you just have to vote to approve this certification. The, the public hearing portion was already done at the APC level, so this, this one is different. You just have to vote to accept the favorable recommendation that it passed.
So I make a motion to, uh, accept this amendment as an awesome, any other discussion? All things say aye?
Aye.
How do you manage?
Yes. That, can, can I add one on the tree board?
Yeah.
That would be us for a thousand dollars for the total tree plant at the community center. Can we get approval on that? It's, the tree was three hundred and eighty-four. Um, and Jan is going to give us an exact price, but usually it's double that amount to have a plant. We can't do it till the fall, except when you plant things.
So not to exceed a certain amount?
Yeah, not to exceed a thousand dollars.
And where exactly is it going to?
It's going to be, I think, where we took down the tree last year.
The one that was going to fall down and kill the children in the playground? That one?
I don't know.
The one that was leaning?
Yes, probably.
Okay.
I haven't been on the tree board that long, so.
Those numbers are pretty awesome.
Yes.
We actually go with the tree board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we don't always.
You don't believe that?
Oh, I have sometimes.
Yep.
Okay, so can, I have a, a motion to approve that not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Do we make an amendment?
Yes.
My second. Any discussion? All things say aye?
Aye.
And one other thing, I, after I met with the tree board, which I forgot to bring up in my minutes, is that I talked to the chief because they're still looking for a quality fit and what, what we want them to do. And so the chief and Tom had talked about the tree board, putting in a budget, aligning it after them. So they don't have to come for everything to the council, have it approved. So Tom and the chief came up with a budget between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. That doesn't mean we'll use it, but there are certain trees that we each have looked at by members that are going to take them down. So we're looking, I don't need approval on it, just some agreement at everybody's attention. So that every time something comes up, they don't have to make an appointment with the town council or whatever.
And that was one of the things we were discussing for the twenty twenty-three budget preparation. Um, again, speaking to Superintendent Dolph today, um, he stressed the amount of trees around town. They have a lot of dead limbs and the right of way, overhanging roads in that need to be addressed. And, um, and there's one north more coming up that's to be taken down with the tree board, we're looking at as well. Um, I will say, a lot of the residents that have been dealing with the street department on trees that are in need of either trimming or removal, a lot of residents have stuck up the top of the tunnel as well. Um, like the one we had on Oma Portal, that resident spent probably close to five hours taking down a tree on the tunnels right of way that actually fell weeks earlier, had a road closed down and that. So we're very grateful to the residents that helped as well.
Can I make a quick?
Sure.
I think we under budgeted for tree rule over the last few years. We found that out through a bit of experience, that we just don't have enough in the budget for the amount of trees that are winding up in bad shape. First of all. Second of all, I think part of the friction with the tree board was that when we put that ordinance through, there was a clause in there specifically to allow the street department to make a decision about an emergency situation and that they would subsequently notify the tree board. I don't think we want to lock that up. I mean, I think there are occasions where trees have to come down, where we really don't have the time for the rush until we. So I just want to make that clear to the new tree board members when we have these discussions that, that clause is in there, number one, for good reason. And then we will notify if soon that happens, if it has to happen. But I think, you know, I think by territory, we do have to come to the table with a lot of knowledge. Are we suggesting that the tree board will make decisions about the streets somehow? I'm confused about that.
No, no, not at all. They, no, not at all. They, if someone comes to them, we, they're working on a form. And there's a great amount of communication between the street superintendent and the town administrator. And they're just wondering where they fit in, and want just to be included to, to know if there's something, you know, where they fit in. So I, they're coming right along, and they're coming up with some good, some good things for us though, I hope.
Yeah, as of this afternoon, when Tom and I spoke, he has a list, and he wants to get the list of the tree board of trees that need to be looked at in the near future. And then probably this fall, we're going to start taking some of those trees down, um, because there's a lot of evidence in that to know, so. But no, last week, Thursday, we had a tree plant come down on the floor. And when I was taking down NIP's, oh, power lines like we did last week. And then we have residents at the Rosack because they're using their power for hours, sometimes days and that. So towns doing an exceptional job going around trying to identify trees that, you know, need some work and/or need to be repaired.
Okay, the last agenda that I have under unfinished business is the one APC and BCA positions that are open. Chris, uh, if you're able to talk, and I had you kind of address this, because I know it's very confusing.
Sure. We, I know it's frustrating for some of us throwing their hat in the ring, but because of the puzzle, we'll call that, in terms of, um, replacing members, some of ours on the BCA, and some of those members also serve in the APC. And the APC has your part, that's what you are, to the number of, um, certain, the same political parties. So with that, uh, I've been working with Dr. O'May to make sure, one, to take an inventory of current appointments, and two, uh, to make sure that we have our due diligence and the order with regard to everybody putting their name in the hat so that somebody doesn't inadvertently get appointed that is disqualified. So as far as the information that I have available to me, and Dr. O'May feel free to correct me, uh, we still need a little bit more time to put those together to, to be able to present to, uh, the town council where it's appropriate and/or the APC if and/or appropriate for an appointment to come from that body, uh, from the, the group of individuals that have submitted their names.
Yeah, my thought would be, I know people are interested to get this done, and I appreciate the people who said, I think we've had six or seven people volunteer. Uh, what I would propose is, if, maybe if we have a special meeting to address this, uh, because it's, it's going to be a difficult discussion because some members have to be on both, and there's questions.
Well, we only have just one appointed that have to be on both, right? We have a BCA slash ABC appointment.
I think so. One place I saw where it had to be two, I was, I was.
Well, yeah, I mean, a quick one, two.
Yeah, there are some, and so it'll be a difficult spot, remember what you did tonight, of course, is if you report that, if there's a council appointment, for example, and you'd be putting that new member in a difficult spot, um, for tomorrow's meeting anyway. So if we can have a meeting that, and it might be appropriate for people to come and explain what their qualifications are too in person, right? If there's one, these would be a question and answer session, but I think a short meeting, if that's possible, to, um, direct attention just to these matters, I think that it would do a little long way to do some house planning and make sure that all the appointments are appropriate.
So does anybody find, has a special need for it maybe two weeks from now? Frank, you have any thoughts with that, three to two weeks from now?
Will we have a plan for the BCA tomorrow?
Um, we may have one member on Zoom to, to call it, but, uh.
No, we're, we're okay for the BCA tomorrow.
Okay, what about the APC?
APC, I think we'll be fine. Now, BCA is going to be issue.
So will schedule a special meeting where they'll come and talk about their qualifications?
Well, and then, then the council needs to sit down and decide who or who, if we need to be on one, and somebody's got to be on both. And it's, I guess it's the personal idea, be on both, because that's the nature of the movement too. So I think there's a lot of discussions that might take place, and we try to do that tonight when I hang out. Okay, so if we're okay with that, now.
Well, wait, 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 what date are we going to meet, twenty eighth?
Uh, I'm gonna have to do that, I'm about to get something out.
Thursday.
What's that?
Thursday afternoon to twenty eighth.
Wait a minute, I can't. I already know, I got something on today.
Friday.
Not Friday.
I can do Friday.
Let me, let me see. All right, public comments. Anybody want to talk?
I'm going to make sure we say thanks.
Yes, I do.
Okay, hold on just a bit. All right, we'll do this, yeah, I'm gonna do the people in person first, I'm gonna do this.
My name is Nikki Chiallick, I live in fourteen twelve Lake Shore. I just, I'm amazed that we've had no publicity since the sewer project is, whatever you want to call it. Uh, people have deferred landscaping projects, people have deferred construction projects, all waiting for the sewers. And if the sewers are no longer, then somebody should tell the people that the sewers are no longer. Um, I educated myself by going to meetings, but not everybody did. So, but, so the education's got to come from you. And I'm not talking about an emotional meeting, I'm just saying, um, letter, what the facts are, go on with your projects. Life goes on. That's all. There's been no publicity.
Anybody else here? Okay, goes it, oh, oh, hold on.
Hi, Mary O'Meo, fifteen thirty-two Lake Shore Drive. Um, now with the sewers being dead, um, hopefully maybe we can look at resurfacing, redoing Lake Shore Drive, which I know was going to be part of the whole thing, but that drastically, as we all know, uh, needs attention. And then, I guess I have one question, and I thought I was up to date with most things, but the Lake Shore water tap, is that affecting the homeowners on Lake Shore Drive? Is that something the Lake Shore Drive homeowners should know about again, so that we're not in the dark with things? So that might be part and parcel of that other letter. And, um, I think that's all I have for now, my pen ran out of things. Thanks.
I think we signed letters up about the water tap? When you do that?
No, we haven't.
But maybe, we have a sewer or out of that, so that would happen.
First of all, we had, first of all, is that we had decided we wanted to receive the project. So right now, we, we decided to, since we're seeing the engineering to come up with numbers and a scope of work for the water project, now that it's divorced from the sewer project. So it's not that this, there's nothing going on behind closed doors. We just found out the sewers were canceled, as you all did, and if you read the papers, we just found out in the last week and a half, two weeks, that the project was canceled. So now we know that the project is no longer moving forward. Now we have to go back and reconstruct it while we're going to propose for the water project. To do that, we have to do the engineering, come up with the same thing we did last night, come up with a bid package, get numbers, decide whether we like the numbers and we want to receive the project. So that's what's going on right now. It's, I'm sorry, it's got to be that, but that's just the nature of the beast. We can't authorize the project until we bid it. We can't bid it until we authorize the engineering. We can't authorize the engineering until we come up with scope of work. So that's what we're running about the business of doing right now.
So as long as Lake Shore Drive, people aren't stuck with the buildings, right, as a whole?
Well, if you were listening earlier, the, the, as Tom Clark stated exclusively, and this has always been the intent, even when the sewer project was active, that the water portion of the project, the water service project, was going to be paid for by the town water department. So no, there's not a new bill coming to the Lake Shore Drive people. But it will involve Lake Shore Drive homeowners in terms of the services that do need to be replaced. And we'll get that scope, again, further defined, and we'll communicate it just like we do with the sewer project so that you guys will know who is affected and what the, what the proposed schedule will look like. It's not going anywhere near as serious as the sewer project, very small charges.
Is it, and I disagree with, oh. Uh, Jane Cole, twenty eleven Lakesford Drive. The follow up question.
Just speak in the mic, something you don't want to hear.
Jane Cole, twenty eleven Lakesford Drive, just as a follow up question. The, uh, the water taps will only involve, uh, Lake Shore Drive and not the water tap for cups for the entire town?
Yeah.
I don't know about the water project.
No, no, it's, the water project per se is just replacing water services that need to be replaced on Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, and they do not need to be replaced throughout the town?
No, this is the last of the old system that has to be, that has to acquire them, yes.
I've heard it was a hundred and forty-one attacks, and all, all the, uh, construction that happened in these, and so it will be very, uh, interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to do this, but Bob Voice, stop twenty-nine. I really like to know who's on the hook for the HOS bill at four hundred thousand. Are we going to pay it, or is Michigan City going to pay it?
We can't comment on that.
So, well, that's good enough for me. Anyway, I think that the town should get a commitment from the Fort County Health Department on what they're going to do about bill twenty-five forty-five. Verbally, they said that they're going to drop the moratorium, but nothing's in writing yet. We don't have any document. And those bills can be modified with a stroke of a pen overnight. So I think we need a firm commitment. So I think we need a firm commitment from the Leport County Health Department that they're going to honor that bill and they're going to do what they said they're going to do verbally.
Maybe you have that on me with getting that, because we're not, Health Department doesn't like on record as saying what they're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph, I have.
Hi, uh thank you, can you hear me?
Can I introduce yourself now?
Yeah, this is Joe, living in my neighborhood, 28th and 18 Lake Shore Drive. And I'm just calling for reference to the work going on across the street from our house, which is now a big stone, rather path going down the beach there. Um both the chief and John Law will kind of call me on it. I just wanted to let you all know how, you know, my thoughts on it. So uh our neighbors over the past year for the fire, there were sea walls. I was all in favor and 100% supported it. Um but that was before I knew this was going to be a permanent uh path down, down to the beach. Um so when I talked to John again, like, you know, the thought process was you could use this for emergencies. And, you know, if you can save lives, I'd be all for it, there's no chance. That, that, that is like a 30% slope straight down from there. Um I haven't met a person who the chief or any of her thinks anything could go down that much, so stand back up. So if you recover, you know, the urgency would not be safer than alive. And I guess secondarily, the thought process was if you could, if more work, if you dump down there, um you, you know, you have that path still there. But I mean, you know, like, these are homeowners, they got to do more work, they're going to get down there. I mean, when I picked my house, I put up electric, I put down parks, but I don't leave them up to ten years so that I can have them up and I go through and clean it, right? So I think this, and the problem, all that, it's going to create more urgency than it can solve. This is very dangerous patch, and you put up signs and, and gazing, whatever you want to do, people are going to walk up and down and need these structures. Not to mention people doing it at night when they're doing extra three or activity. It's just very dangerous. So I think this is not worth it. I'm also confused as to how large you can do that, because as we heard early in the meeting, there's a fair district where it's covered, rules, not long meetings, is every homeowner has to a site. That lot by definition covers about 85%. So everyone, the town has divided by 30, provides 100% down the mass. But for the town on the lot, they can do whatever they want. So that seems out of bounds. And then the last point is, you're introducing another risk to the town, which is, and I must say before, I understand as, as a person who's a member of the town, it could be expensive. You got brain tissues thrown into the Ozlorn's house, Ozlorn's life deal, but you're introducing all these threats. And you're dehumanizing the most beautiful stretch of beach is the town. So I don't know why we're doing this, I just think it's not worth it. And there was a good reason to watch it, it makes sense, but with you members, it's all on it, and I think it's ugly. That's it.
Thanks, Joe, well. Thanks, Joe, well, think about that, see if we come up with some sort of solution to that situation. Uh I appreciate it, your comments. Anybody else who wants to make any comments? Any council?
Yes, uh for comments, we can, uh, we.
Go ahead, Sparker.
Yeah, the 1266 Lake Shore Drive. I just want to comment the police department, of course, they like, they made a big difference while the police department was, you know, they were all over the Lake Shore Drive and that were the beat. And that is really what this kind of, uh, gave difference than compared to last year. Last year, I think, come to KTM, I don't know from where, they were sitting there, started burning their fires, and it's not shocking, uh some kind of sort of relations, remarks felt out there. And I walked in them and said, look, you know, you can sit here, have a good time, enjoy it, but I'm not going to allow you to make these type of actions at all. I'm going to call the police and it's not going to happen again. So they got fired, and I think this year, uh Steve Johnson's done a great job, I just want to thank him for the speaking this piece and also very, very well done. Thank you very much, I appreciate your help in this matter.
Thanks, Parker. Anybody else on the second? Otherwise, any council comments? I need to prove.
Yes, I need to prove. We spent 372,608,037 cents last month from checks, 1871 and 1954. A little bit more than that, I mentioned earlier, who we paid for half of the tower, who we paid for the bomb, we paid for an attack, and that, and we had our general payroll of 74,402,72 cents. So I would make a motion to prove.
I would make that motion. Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion? Ready to say aye?
Aye.
All right, aye, who's in advance? I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.